I would like to call this meeting to order. Will you all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Primoroso.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Thank you so much, Patty. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications this evening to our agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving right along. As to our announcements and presentations, we have...
No, ma'am.
None. All right. So I do have two comment cards from the public. I'm going to call your name. If you could come to the podium and give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. So first card is for Gina Levesque. I apologize. If you could come to the podium, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Gina Levesque, and I am the Intake and Compliance Manager for the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics. I'm here today to speak to you about the Commission on Ethics and our goal to enhance the public's trust in government. In 2009, an independent commission on ethics was established from recommendations from a grand jury. We were created to provide oversight, transparency, and accountability for over 12,000 officials, public employees, and advisory board members in the county. We also have jurisdiction over lobbyists, principals, and employers of lobbyists and vendors. Our commission is independent of any county or municipal government, and our commissioners are chosen by independent groups such as the Palm Beach County League of Cities, the Three Bar Associations in the county, Florida Atlantic University, the Association of Chiefs of Police, and the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, or the Florida Finance Officers Association. As you are aware, county government and every municipality in the county is subject to the Code of Ethics, the Lobbyist Registration Ordinance, and the Post-Employment Ordinance. To that end, the ethics programs are simply designed to further the public's trust in government. Research has shown that a lack of trust results in decreased public participation, cynicism, and apathy that can derail our democratic ideals and lead citizens to believe that decisions are made for the benefit of select groups or private interests and not for the good of the community. The Commission on Ethics is a 12-page document that creates a backstop to enhance public trust by ensuring that public officials and employees conduct themselves independently and impartially and do not use their offices for private gain. The key to success, successful ethics programs, is education and prevention. Ongoing training, advisory opinions, and the establishment of a culture of ethics is our goal. While the commission has statutory authority as a quasi-judicial code enforcement board to issue letters of reprimand, letters of recommendation, and fines up to $500 per violation, staff strives to educate public officials, employees, and advisory board members to prevent violations before they occur. The availability of our staff to train and answer questions through our advisory opinions may also prevent ethical misconduct from becoming criminal misconduct. To date, we have over 523 opinions on our database and on our website available to search. In closing, you're all doing a great work here on behalf of the people you represent. In doing so, please remember your solemn duty to consider the ethics of your actions. And the motto of our agency or our organization is act first, ask first, act later. Almost said that backwards. Well, that shows you're all paying attention because you laughed. So if anyone has any questions... I guess I've been beeped.
You're allowed.
If anyone has any questions, please call our office. We are all available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Ask first, act later. Got it. Noted. Thank you very much. All right, we're also pulling up Sandra Lawson, please. Do you have a card? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Lawson. I'm from the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resiliency out of Atlanta, Georgia. We're working here in Broward County as well as adjacent counties to Broward due to the flood disaster from April 12th through 14th. Because it's a presidential declaration, it's our duty to come out and let every county that was included in the declaration know what's available to them. So for Palm Beach County, all small businesses and private nonprofits that were impacted economically by the storm is entitled to apply for economic injury disaster loan funds. If a business is eligible, you know, they can get up to $2 million, that kind of thing. So we just wanted them to know what's available to them, and we wanted to start with you guys so that if anybody has questions, they can come to us in Broward County in person, they can apply online, they can give us a call at our 800 number. We're here to help. And the declaration for economic injury is not until January of next year, so it's plenty of time if they feel that they suffered economically.
Thank you. Did you want to repeat that 800 number again, just in case anyone's listening? Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it.
All right.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, we're going to go to our city manager report. Ron, do you have a report this evening?
Thank you. I do. I have a few items to bring to your attention. First of all, I'd like to announce that at a recent Florida Municipal Communicators Association at their annual conference, our own Candace Temple was sworn in as president. She says I have to address her as Madam President for the next year. Also at that conference, the City of Palm Beach Gardens won a top award for a collaborative video that was produced last year and is still being used for Stroke Month for accentuating that. So I thought some of you were not here last year and got an opportunity to see the fabulous acting that went on with this self-produced video. So I thought it would be worthwhile to give you an opportunity to be amazed.
Remember your training. Every 40 seconds, someone in America suffers a stroke. Sometimes, they mistake it for something else.
I remember, master. They often ignore the symptoms or go to sleep.
Correct. And every minute they wait increases the risk of brain damage, disability, or death.
Time equals brain.
Correct again, my apprentice. We must master the skills if we hope to defeat a stroke. Do you remember your training?
I...I think so.
Just remember, balance, eyes, face, arms, speech, time.
Balance, eyes, face, arm, speech, time. What if I forget?
You may be the galaxy's only hope. Just remember, be fast.
Be fast. Balance, eyes, face, arm, speech, time. Be fast.
You don't know the power of a stroke.
Your training is complete. Let's be fast. Balance. You may experience a loss of balance, headache, or dizziness.
Eyes. You may have blurred vision.
Face. Sudden weakness or numbness in the face, especially on one side.
Arm. Sudden weakness or numbness in an arm or leg, especially on one side of the body.
Impressive.
Every minute that a person suffers from a stroke, 2 million brain cells will die. They need immediate medical intervention.
I'm ready. Let's be fast and finish the fight.
You may be the only hope. Master the skills, learn the warning signs, and be fast.
Now, if that isn't an award-winning video, I don't know who it is. It's a great collaboration effort between different departments within the city to deliver a very important message in a very cute way. So thank you very much for that and appreciate Candace for putting that in for the award and winning. Appreciate it. The next thing I'd like to bring to your attention was this past Wednesday morning, Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce recognized our fire rescue department and the crew in particular, which received the prestigious Valor Award. I thought it would be necessary to bring this to your attention because it's such an amazing event that went on and the care that was given to a patient was amazing. I just, I don't know it. So I asked Chief Brier to come up and introduce the crew that received the Valor Award this past Wednesday and let them tell their story so that you can all hear it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. So as you know, yesterday morning, we had the opportunity for the 2023 Palm Beach Chamber North to go there for their annual Valor Awards. Part of those Valor Awards are, you have a Fire Rescue Call of the Year and a Law Enforcement Call of the Year. This year, hands down, we won the Call of the Year, and I'm going to bring up District Captain Ashley Turana in a second just to tell you about that call. But one of the things is, is that you know through our annual report and our quarterly reports, we do a ton of training. And we train for low-frequency, high-risk events. Those are the events that we do most of the training for, right? Those are the things that we can control. So one of the things Ashley and her crew was able to do was, and Ashley will give you the particulars, but for us, childbirth is kind of a rare call for us, right? We don't see it that much. It's infrequent. Very rarely do we have an actual infant upon arrival in complete cardiac arrest, and even less likely is the chance that that child gets resuscitated. So with that being said, I will have District Ashley Turana come up with her crew so she can introduce her crew individually, and then she's just going to go give you a rundown of that call. Okay?
Madam Mayor, Council. So I have Alex Caraballo, Captain Alex Caraballo, Fire Medic Carlos Iraban, Fire Medic JT Wallachevitz, Driver Engineer John Reynolds, and Lieutenant Danny Duval. Like Chief Brier said, my name is Ashley Turana, and I'm an EMS captain here in the City of Palm Beach Gardens. Yesterday, the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce held their annual Valor Awards to acknowledge the first responders in our communities who go above and beyond the call of duty. On behalf of Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue, the city, and my entire crew, we were honored to have been chosen to be awarded the prestigious Call of the Year. I would not be standing before you today to share this exciting news if it weren't for the amazing men and women that I have the privilege of leading. Without them, the outcome on this call would not have been possible. These are just a few of them, obviously. On February 20th of last year, we responded to an OB childbirth call where we found a lifeless, blue, pulseless, and apneic, which means not breathing, newborn on the tile bathroom floor with nothing being done for him. We worked tirelessly as a crew to bring this sweet baby back to life through every compression on his tiny chest, every ventilation to his little lungs, and every medication meticulously drawn up and administered through a needle drilled into his bone. This is a low-frequency, high-acuity call, like the chief said. It's a call filled with high levels of stress and emotions as it involves an innocent child. This call requires, excuse me, every team member working together simultaneously to create a favorable outcome. For baby Logan, the result was a now bouncing, happy, beautiful baby boy who is living an amazing...oh, there he is, right there. Can you guys see that? Sorry, it gets me choked up a little bit. Who's living an amazing life with his new mom and dad. This is far from the norm as national statistics will tell us. The average outcome for a child newborn, not even a...or sorry, an infant, not even a newborn that goes into cardiac arrest outside of the hospital is less than 5%. This means that the baby goes on to live a normal life with little to no deficit. To say baby Logan is a miracle is definitely an understatement. We have had the incredible opportunity to watch Logan grow, meet all of his milestones, and celebrate his first birthday this past February, and continue to break through the glass ceiling of every expectation that was set by his doctors. He is the reason we train so hard to hone our skills, always ensuring that every patient we treat receives the best possible chance of survival. We, as first responders, have a hard time letting people in. We struggle to find sense in the terrible things that we see. We avoid burdening family and friends by sharing our experiences, all while we strive to maintain the highest level of empathy and compassion. We are an elite group of human beings that run into a burning building when everyone else is running out for complete strangers, giving every ounce of our being to the communities that we serve, oftentimes sacrificing self for all else. Some would say we're a little crazy to begin with, and I would tend to agree with that. If you know a first responder, give him a hug and thank them. While preparing for this day, I spoke to Doug and Alyssa Clark, who are Logan's parents, to tell them that we were being given an award for Logan's life story. In the words of Alyssa, "You and your team will always be so special to us." There is no doubt we will forever carry Logan in our hearts and remember the sound of his cry when he took his first breaths in this big world. So thank you so much for having us tonight. We appreciate it.
Next, once again, our tennis and pickleball facility recently received recognition from the USTA, and Charlotte Przydinski is here to tell us a little bit about that.
So honored to be following that. That is absolutely amazing. So I've titled this "Kudos in Summer of 2023." Oh, hang on. There we go. So as you know, our Tennis and Pickleball Center is the hub of community tennis in probably all of South Florida. And the USTA Florida recognized them recently in an article in their magazine that goes out to every tennis member in the community throughout the state, highlighting what we do at our tennis center to celebrate National Tennis Month. And really, what they talked about was the ability for Wendy and her team to bring community tennis to just about everyone who wants to play the game. And they hold us up, and you can see by the excerpt from the article, they hold us up as an example of not only being able to grow tennis, but to sustain it. And that really is to Wendy and Andy's credit, the things that they do for every level of tennis player to play, ability or not, able-bodied or not, they are welcomed at the tennis center. And it's truly an honor to have USTA Florida highlight the center, and I really love Wendy's quote that was in the article. "We strive our entire community by offering a variety of activities and programs and always adding and looking for new programs and events to be leaders in the field." They believe that in their heart every day, and it is amazing what they bring to the tennis center. Wendy was not able to be with us tonight, but she thanks you for being recognized. So this is truly an honor because this is recognition from her peers. Also, we've had a lot of conversation about the Aquatics Center opening. So there's a picture of our new Aquatics Center opened over Memorial Day weekend. It was nothing less than a splash. You can see, no pun intended. For those of you who haven't been on the deck yet, the newest addition to this pool is this zero-gravity entrance that's here. Again, all persons with all abilities are able to access the pool now with that gentle entry that goes down to no deeper than 3 and 1/2 feet in this general area. And we still have lap lanes available so we can back up our competition pool. The kids have loved these floating lily pads. I'll show you a few other pictures. Here's one of the little girls coming down the big slide. Kids, again, on the lily pads. Our splash pad is active. In the first four days, we had over 1,000 patrons come through the doors to participate in the program. I do want to give kudos. This is Erin Anderson in the red shirt. She is our aquatics manager. She has brought a new level of professionalism and training to our staff. That group of lifeguards is absolutely one of the best-trained staffs I have seen in my career. We could not do that, though, without this other photo that you see on the bottom. I thank our partner in fire and rescue. That is a transfer of care training, so once, if something happens, it has our lifeguards actively work with our fire rescue staff so they know how to transfer that care over so there's a continuity. And that is something that fire rescue and Erin started last year, and we continue it every year. So that highlights the exceptional training, but the pool's been a tremendous hit. I'll end with a picture of summer camp that opened on Tuesday. One thing I want to note here, and again, thank our partner in police. If you see the officer here in the back, that's Officer Say. They're there every day in Burns Road welcoming the kids and parents, and they're every night when they leave. They're on-site during the whole camp, and they have a significant presence also at our camp at Riverside and our camp at the tennis center, so that brings a lot of comfort. But it's also neat to see them interacting with the kids. A couple quick facts. Every week, we have around 300 campers, but this summer, we have 2,840 kids registered at all the various camp programs. That is the highest camp number since 2012. So we...it's a big, big-to-do at Gardens right now. Swim lessons start next week, so if anybody has children and if they're listening, please get registered. They're filling up fast, but just happy summer's here and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Charlotte. You never miss an opportunity to plug a program, do you?
Not at all.
Thank you. The next thing I just want to bring up is a brief presentation. You know, the legislature is over. There's a lot of bills that have been passed. In particular, there are a few that are giving us a lot of confusion about how this is going to be implemented and the impact on us. And I have asked Natalie and Joanne, in particular, to give us a brief overview of what we're looking at with the Live Local bill that was passed recently. Now, this is an overview. They're busy preparing a very detailed document for you that will come out later on, but I just wanted to give you a little heads up as far as what we may be facing in the very near future. Joanne?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Joanne Skory, Assistant Director with the Planning and Zoning Department, and I will be presenting an overview of the Live Local Act this evening. So Senate Bill 102, also known as the Live Local Act, was passed unanimously in the State Senate and signed into law on March 29th by Governor DeSantis, and it is effective July 1st, 2023. There are six bill sponsors that are shown on the screen, with the primary sponsor being Cali-Tayoud out of Miami-Dade. It is an ominous bill with a myriad of provisions regarding affordable housing at both the state and local level. So what does Senate Bill 102 do? As I mentioned, there are a myriad of provisions, 46 unique amendments to the state statutes, to be exact, over the span of 95 pages. This presentation is intended to be a high-level overview of some of the key provisions that, as it pertains to the city. One of the key provisions of the bill is a record amount of funding from the Sadowski Fund and other sources at the state level towards programs that have historically been underfunded or swept. Some of these programs include SHIP and SAIL and the new Florida Hometown Heroes Program, providing a landmark $711 million of funding. The bill includes other provisions at the state level having to do with Florida Housing Finance Corporation, which is a state agency, revisions to the state housing strategy, increased funding for programs such as the Community Contribution Tax Credit Program, and new ad valorem tax, property tax exemptions. As the city does not currently participate in SHIP or many of these other state-level programs, the city will not see many impacts in this area, but will continue to track them and monitor them for impacts. As you may be aware, one of the provisions that has received a lot of attention from the local governments has to do with the noteworthy preemption on local land use, zoning, height, and density. Specifically, local governments are required to allow multifamily development on commercial, industrial, and mixed-use lands if at least 40% of the units are affordable to income-eligible households for a minimum of 30 years. Affordable is defined as for households earning 120% AMI or less, and rents must be income-limited. The maximum allowable density in the jurisdiction is permitted by right, and the maximum allowable height may not be required to be less than the currently allowed height within one mile of the proposed development or three stories, whichever is greater. It also requires an administrative review process. However, all other applicable regulations, such as setbacks, parking, landscaping, environmental codes, and traffic reviews, still apply. There are some other local provisions, namely preempting local government controls on rent. The city doesn't have a rent control ordinance, so we don't see any impacts from that, and we are required to post some specific information on publicly-owned land and policies on the city website. Fairly minor. So how does this impact the city? The density and height prohibitions in Senate Bill 102 lack clarity and implementation, as Mr. Ferris alluded. The maximum allowable density is unclear on if this includes bonus density provisions that are provided, for example, in our TOD or the base maximum density for a zoning district. Additionally, the maximum allowable height provision of highest currently allowed lacks specificity on whether this includes existing buildings that were approved via waiver or if it's the code-permitted maximum height. The administrative-level review process and lack of public hearings for a full-site plan review is a significant deviation from the city's current processes. All other applicable regulations, though, still apply, and the city has very strong codes when it comes to multifamily development, so that will certainly help us regulate these There is also a provision that municipalities that designate less than 20% of land area within the jurisdiction for commercial or industrial use must only authorize projects that are a mixed-use format. So the City of Palm Beach Gardens... So the city of Palm Beach Gardens does currently have less than 20% of industrial and commercial land, and so any project that comes forward has to be a mixed-use project. Though the city only has less than 20% commercial and industrial lands, there are many properties that can see impacts from this, and you'll see a snip of some of the primary parcels that could have impacts shown on your screen. They're color-coded by their zoning districts of commercial, industrial, and mixed-use. And you'll see a one-mile buffer around some of the tallest buildings in the city in our urban core. So these are some parcels that we'll be paying attention to as far as impacts the city. I would also like to take a moment to highlight the city's workforce housing program and how this bill relates to our existing workforce housing program. So the first thing I would like to point out is that the city's workforce housing program is consistent with the state housing strategy updates. They're in line with the incentive-based strategies that the city is providing to the private sector to deliver workforce housing. On the city council's agenda tonight for second reading is our Workforce Housing Land Development Regulations Amendment, which provides the density bonus strategies, including a more detailed provision of density bonus, providing tiering, setbacks, and enhanced buffers. The city's program is successful with many projects both under construction and under review, and there is no element of Senate Bill 182 that conflict with the city's program. So to conclude, the subsection 5 of Senate Bill 102 has the potential to have impacts to the city of Palm Beach Gardens with regard to the land use, zoning, density, and height preemptions. However, the bill lacks clarity with regard to how these will be specifically implemented. The bill does require that all other code provisions apply, so this does help the city. Any situation where any type of waiver is required, that will not be applicable to this bill. And LDR amendments may be forthcoming. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
If I may, again, this is just to provide you with an idea of what our staff and our city attorney are going to be having to deal with in the very near future in trying to come in compliance with a very confusing piece of legislation. So if you have any general questions, I'm sure we'd be able to try to answer them with what we do know. But for right now, it's going to be a challenge, but we got the best staff and city attorney around, so I'm sure they'll figure it out.
Thank you so much, Ron. I don't see our council asking questions now, but Joanne, thank you. That was really thorough, considering what you had to go through, and I'm sure we will have questions as time goes on, and you guys always do a great job educating us.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Joanne. Excellent. Thank you. That concludes the city manager's report for this evening.
Thank you very much. All right, so we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is anyone from council pulling anything off of consent? No? All right, I'm not pulling anything, but I do want to thank the National Gun Violence folks for coming out this evening. So we have nothing pulled. May I get a motion in a second to approve our consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, motion from Carl?
Second.
All right, second from Dana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. We're going to move on to our public hearings now, so I'm going to go ahead and read the quasi-judicial statements. So tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings in the following cases. Ordinance 8, 2023, for second reading and adoption, a planned unit development rezoning. Resolution 25, 2023, a major conditional use approval. Resolution 28, 2023, identification signage for the divested towers. Resolution 31, 2023, site plan for POD 21 of the Avenue Planned Community Development. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witness's appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or offer any written comments, please fill out the card and pass it along to our city clerk. Our clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you so much. If the clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 3, 2023, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the city-initiated text amendment to the future land use element of the city's comprehensive land use plan to revise a policy related to building height within the transit-oriented development TOD district, to incorporate a new policy related to design guidelines in the TOD district, and to incorporate a new objective and associated policies for Marina District, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-in sheet at the front desk for anyone wanting additional information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you so much. Has anything changed since first reading?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There have been no substantive changes, as you all were made aware, as I understand in your agenda reviews. We received no objections from the state. They did have one minor technical comment, that the map that was previously included be labeled so that it's officially adopted in our comprehensive plan, which we are doing, so that comment was addressed, and there are no other changes. As a reminder, this item received approval from the chamber, Palm Beach North, excuse me, and the PGA Corridor Association, and staff recommends approval. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Thank you so much. My council, do you guys want a presentation at all this evening? All right, so we are not asking for one. We don't have anyone wishing to speak. We don't have any comment cards, so I did not open the hearing. I apologize. I'm going to open the hearing, and I'm going to close the hearing. Could I get a motion in a second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 3, 2023, on second reading.
All right, thank you. So Carl and Marcy, do we have any further discussion? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, guys, so much. Moving right along to Ordinance 4, 2023. If the clerk could please read the title.
This has been prerecorded. Ordinance 4, 2023, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development Regulations at Section 78-57, targeted expedited permitting program by repealing subsection A, B, and C, re-adopting same as revised, and by adopting new subsection D, further amending Chapter 78 by adopting new section 78-59, workforce and affordable housing program. Further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-99, exemptions and credits by repealing subsection B, C, and D, re-adopting same as revised, and by adopting new subsection E, further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-141, residential zoning district regulations. By amending Table 10, Property Development Regulations, residential zoning districts, and by adopting new note 11 to Table 10. Further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-154, PUD, Plan Unit Development Overlay District by repealing subsections G1, G2, and G4, re-adopting same as revised. And by amending Table 13, PUD Residential Density Limits, further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-155, PCD, Plan Community Development Overlay District, PCD, by repealing subsections E1 and G, re-adopting same as revised. And by amending Table 15, Maximum Residential Density in PCDs, further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-157, MXD, by repealing subsection A and re-adopting same as revised. Further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-159, permitted uses, minor and major conditional uses, and prohibited uses. By adopting new subsection J 78 and amending Table 21, permitted, conditional, and prohibited use chart, further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-181, uses, by repealing subsection C8, re-adopting same as revised, and by adopting new subsection C9, further amending Chapter 78 at Section 78-222, transit-oriented development TOD overlay district. By repealing subsection F5 and re-adopting same as revised, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, virtual Patty. I'm going to open the hearing. Has anything changed since first reading?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no changes. We are very pleased to present this on second final reading. A special acknowledgement to Joanne Skaria and Olivia Ellison on their amazing work on this ordinance. I think Joanne's presentation really covered the legislation, and we're very happy about this ordinance, because we believe that the density and the menu-based incentives are being addressed in the Gardens' way, with tiering, compatibility, and standards that still maintain the city of Palm Beach Gardens' standards. So no changes on second reading.
Great, and wonderful synopsis. Thank you. So do we need a presentation, council? No? All right. And we don't have anyone wishing to speak on this item. We don't have any comment cards, so I am going to go ahead and close this hearing. May I get a motion in a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 4, 2023, second reading and adoption.
Thank you, Dana. All right, thank you, Bert. All right, any further discussion from our team up here? No? All right. Wonderful. Again, thank you, guys, so much for your diligent work.
All in favor?
I'm just going to say one sentence. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. Is there a game or something?
Not my name.
All right. Moving on to Ordinance 7, 2023. Tonight, Ordinance 7 and 8, with a companion resolution of 25, will be a combined presentation if we have one. Since Ordinance 8 and Resolution 25 are quasi-judicial, we will declare ex parte at this time, and the clerk will read the title separately for each, and there will be separate vote for Ordinance 7 and for Ordinance 8 on second reading and Resolution 25, 2023. So do we go ahead? Do you want us to do ex parte after you read the title or before?
It's your pleasure, Mayor.
Okay, let's just do ex parte now. So let's go down the line. Marcy, do you have any ex parte for Ordinance 7, Ordinance 8, or Resolution 25?
I do not.
Thank you so much, Bert.
No, no, no.
Thank you so much, Dana.
No times three.
All right, Carl?
Triple negative.
All right, and same for myself. I have none, so if the clerk could please read the title.
Ordinance 7, 2023, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a small-scale amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPSS-21-09-000019, in order to change the land use designation of a parcel on 9.88 acres in size, more or less, from professional office PO and residential medium RM to residential low RL. The subject property being generally located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Northlake Boulevard and Memorial Park Road, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, providing that the future land use map of the city of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-in sheet at the front table for anyone wanting additional information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you, Patty. All right, we're going to open the hearing. Has anything changed since our first reading?
No, Madam Mayor, there have been no changes. Ordinance 7, Ordinance 8 on second reading. Resolution 25 was previously incorporated into the presentations of Ordinance 7 and 8, and so that has been already presented. However, we are more than happy to present if the council wishes, but there are no changes.
All right, does our council wish for a presentation? I see none. All right, so thank you. I think Brian's here, and Martin's here. Thank you, but we're going to keep on going along. I don't have any comment cards, and I am going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second to approve, please?
Once make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 7, 2023. Are we doing them all?
One.
Once?
Separate.
Oh, all separate? Okay, then that's my motion.
Okay, Ordinance 7. Okay. May I get a second? Dana? All right, so that's great. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. Let's move on to Ordinance 8. Do we need to have that read again, Patty, or we just keep on going?
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me. Ordinance Renata, you're going to have to read this one.
All right, so we'll just take a moment. We'll have Renata please read Ordinance Number 8, 2023, when you have a moment. Thank you so much.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain parcels of real property being comprised of 43.41 acres in size, more or less, and consisting of three parcels, two of which comprise 13.24 acres, more or less, and have a planned unit development, PUD overlay, with a mix of underlying zoning consisting of residential low RL-3, residential medium RM, and professional office PO, with the third parcel comprising of 30.17 acres, more or less, and being zoned entirely RL-3 to PUD overlay with an underlying zoning of RL-3, so that the entire 43.41 acres, more or less, shall be unified in one PUD overlay, such parcels being generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, approximately 1.3 miles east of Coconut Boulevard, providing that the zoning map of the city of Palm Beach Gardens be amending accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you so much, Renata. I'm going to open the hearing. We did have ex parte previously stated that nobody had anything to declare. Has anything changed since the last meeting?
No, ma'am.
No, since the last reading? Excuse me. All right, does anyone up here need a presentation on Ordinance 8? No? All right, and we don't have anyone here wishing to speak. We don't have any comment cards, so I am going to close the hearing. May I please get a motion in a second to approve Ordinance 8, 2023, at second reading?
Can I make a motion to approve Ordinance 8, 2023, second reading and adoption?
Second.
All right, thank you, Dana and Bert. Any further discussion from council? All right, having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much. We're moving on to Resolution 25, 2023. If our clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 25, 2023, is a companion item to Ordinance 8, 2023, and will require council action. Resolution 25, 2023, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the Star of David Planned Unit Development, PUD, with a conditional use approval for cemetery use consisting of 43.41 acres, more or less, located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Northlake Boulevard and Memorial Park Road, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thanks so much, Renata. I'm going to open the hearing. We declared ex parte already for Resolution 25, 2023, with no one having anything to declare. So let's see, we don't have anyone speaking on this item. We don't have any comment cards. Anyone need? We have nothing has changed, so let's go ahead and close the hearing. Make it a motion in a second to approve Resolution 25, 2023, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 25, 2023.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dana and Bert. Any further discussion amongst our council? All right, seeing none, let's take it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you, Martin. Thank you for being here. All right, we're going to move on to Ordinance 10. If we could have the clerk read the title for Ordinance 10, 2023, at first reading.
Ordinance 10, 2023, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development Regulations at Section 78-159, permitted uses minor and major conditional uses, and prohibited uses by amending Table 21, permitted conditional and prohibited use chart, in order to prohibit adult arcades and/or internet cafes, and by adopting new subsection J 79 to adopt regulations to prohibit simulated gambling devices, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Excellent, Patty. Thank you so much. Let's open this hearing. Let's open this hearing. I'm going to call on our attorney, Max Lohman, to give us an explanation of Ordinance 10/2023, please.
Ordinance 10/2023 is being proffered for your consideration this evening in response to some police activity that has gone on here in the city and a problem that has kinda swept through Florida. From Jacksonville all the way down to the Treasure Coast, recently, there's been a slew of police activity and busts through undercover efforts of adult arcades/internet cafes. There aren't so much internet cafes anymore as there are adult arcades. And what they are is they end up being, 99% of the time, they're illegal gambling institutions. They use simulated, they use, basically, they look like slot machines, they have simulated gambling devices or gambling devices, and they violate Florida state law. They still exist in Florida because our, as our police officers would tell you, it takes a great deal of effort and time to build and undercover, go in undercover and build a case against these types of establishments. Few months ago, our police department did that very thing and shut down the only one that we had in the city. And they are a, they end up being a public nuisance, and they foster criminal activity. The people there that are gambling, they get upset when they lose money, they're running around, you have ATM machines that are in there that are largely, that are typically not filled in a more traditional fashion with an armored car, somebody coming to fill them, that's sometimes a guy with a duffel bag or a briefcase coming in to fill the ATM machine, which makes it an in traffic nuisance for people that want to, that realize that because you have a guy with $50,000 or $60,000 in cash. So, since we don't have any in the city right now, once, once our police officers shut this down, I approached the city manager and we discussed it and thought it might be a good idea to bring forward an ordinance for the council's consideration to prohibit them as a use. There's only one or two places in the city that you typically will find them because, thankfully, our real estate values and the rent values here kind of make it a little cost prohibitive. But, so, being that, that being the case, what I did is I did some research to try and find some regulate, trying to find a way to come up with a regulatory scheme to prohibit them and then also to regulate and eliminate the simulated gambling equipment. And I have to give credit to the City of Jacksonville, I went, I did a bunch of research, I was looking online, and their ordinance popped up, and I read it, and I was very impressed with the regulatory scheme that they had developed. It seemed to be very well thought out and very well put together. It's been on their books for two years, they've been using it and enforcing it with a great deal of success, and so I took their ordinance and I customized it to fit our code and presented it to you this evening. I strongly encourage your favorable disposition of this ordinance, I think it will be a good thing for the city. It would prohibit this use and then prohibit the use, ownership, or operation commercially of these simulated gambling devices. These establishments, as I said, typically are either, they're gambling and/or money laundering venues, and this would prohibit them, it would prevent them from being in our city ever again, and, which will then free up our police officers to do a lot of their good work for us.
Excellent, thank you, Max. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? And I don't have any comments card, comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 10/2023 at first reading, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 10/2023, first reading.
Second.
Lots of seconds, all right, I think it sounded like Dana and Carl, thank you so much. Do we have anything we want to discuss about that? Anyone wanna speak? Marcy?
I don't really have any questions, I just have a comment, which is really to thank, thank you, thank the police, and also to thank Jacksonville for their forward thinking and bringing this ordinance before us. Many people don't, I sure didn't, realize the damage that such an establishment can have on a community and also possibly to people, so I really feel like this is another way to keep our residents safe and to remove the opportunity for crime before it happens, so I appreciate you guys doing this and bringing this before us.
Thank you, Marcy. We'll go ahead to Bert.
Yeah, the only comment I had is in the ordinance itself is a, an exemption for organizations to have events, so that will still be allowed within the city with notification to the chief of police, obviously, that we wanna monitor whatever events going on or whatever organization is putting it on, so that's still a caveat where people can do fundraising and make money, but we just wanna monitor that in the city and make sure that what's going on is truly what's going on for the organization involved. So, I appreciate the attorney putting that in there, I think that's important, that we're just not letting everything go altogether. There is opportunities for these organizations to do some work in the city, to raise money, and then promote their cause, so, thank you, Max.
And I apologize, I think, Ron, you wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, yeah, that's all I had, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Ron, please.
I just wanna inform you that Attorney Lohman was interviewed today by Channel 12 regarding Ordinance 10, and his debut was supposed to be at 11:00 PM tonight on Channel 12, if you like, I don't know how much they'll show, but it was a very informative interview, which will give the public the information about what we're trying to accomplish here.
Excellent, thank you, Max, all around. Any other comments or questions from council? All right, thank you, Max, we really appreciate you taking care of our city. All right, let's take it to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, thank you so much. Moving right along to Resolution 28 of 2023, if the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 28/2023, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a revision to the building identification signage for the Devasta Towers Plan Unit Development, PUD, located east of alternate A1A between Kyoto Gardens Drive and PGA Boulevard, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you so much, I'm going to open the hearing. Let's go ahead and declare ex parte, we'll start with Marcy.
I do have an ex parte, I had a brief conversation with Connie Thompson and Susan Thomas with Touchstone Web and our client, Bobby.
Okay, wonderful, and Bert?
None.
And Dana?
Nope, none.
And Carl? All right, I have one ex parte, which is that George Denteel reached out to me this afternoon to apologize that he wouldn't be here, but thank, it's lovely to see you, thank you so much for coming. Let's go ahead, and so you are not George Denteel, but you...
She's taller than George.
Don't let him know that. For the record, I'm Emily O'Mahony, I'm a partner with George at 2GHO, and I'm pleased to be here, I don't think I've been in front of this council for a long time.
And have you been sworn in?
I swore, yes, I was sworn in.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be here. This is what I consider a very simple request. This is for the Devasta Towers to change the signage up on the parapet on the north tower, and the, the project is 224,000 square feet of Class A office on the east side of alternate A1A, north of the overpass on PGA. And between the two towers is a parking structure. So, the, we're talking about the north tower, and we're talking about the west elevation only. Well, it does affect both. Right now, this is what it looks like, it says Devasta Towers, and this is the side on the west that we wanna modify, and then on the north, we want to have the signs removed. So, ultimately, the north tower has two signs, we're removing both of them and putting back on one on the west side. So, it's a reduction of signage. This is, the, the picture on the left is the proposed, the picture on the right is the existing. And the, the, we're doing this because over a majority holder of office space, NFP, they're gonna have their name on this tower as a majority leader. Here's the elevation, and you can see this is a detail sheet of what the lettering would be like up there, it's channel lettering, and per conditions, et cetera, it is black, it reads black during the day, and it lights up at night from within and does not splash out on the sides, so it's just those letters. So, this is what it would look like. So, this is a request to move two facade signs and replace with one. It will identify the major tenant in the north tower. NFP is a major corporation in the insurance industry, and NFP has leased over 20,000 square feet, and the new sign meets the sign code of the city, and staff has recommended approval. In addition, the, the owner would like, would be coming back in the future for the south tower to do the same thing. So, ultimately, you bring both those towers into current code compliance with the city. So, and that's pretty much it, and if there are any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Emily, we appreciate it. Do we have a staff presentation this evening?
No additional staff presentation, staff does recommend approval, the planning and zoning board also unanimously voted approval for this petition.
Okay, excellent, and I don't see, does anyone wanna speak on this? I don't have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve Resolution 28/23?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 28/2023.
Second.
All right, great, let's bring it back for discussion. Does anyone on council have anything you wanna say? Bert, go for it.
No, I don't have anything really to say on the project, but I saw George at dinner last Saturday night, he's celebrating his 50th wedding anniversary, him and his lovely bride, so I got a chance to say hello to him, then, we didn't discuss the project, but I just wanna get on the record for him, congratulations to him, that's a great achievement, so please tell him we said that, yeah, that is. And I tried to buy him dinner, but he ran out the door, so it was too late, so, but thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate it.
All right, and anyone else? Nope, all right, so, thank you so much for coming this evening, it's wonderful to see you guys keeping our city so beautiful and staying within all of our requirements, so let's bring it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero, thank you so much. Moving right along to Resolution 31/2023, if the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 31/2023, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan for a 204-lot, single-family residential subdivision on approximately 62.78 acres, more or less, known as POD 21, within the residential district parcel A of the Avenir Plan Community Development, PCD, located on the south side of Avenir Drive, approximately 0.40 miles west of Coconut Boulevard, the Avenir PCD being generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Grapeview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. All right, let's open this hearing. Do we have any ex parte for Resolution 31/2023? We'll go down starting with Marcy again.
Negative.
All right?
No.
All right, Dana? All right, Carl? Same here, I have none, so let's go ahead and we, now, Brian Terry, you're up at the podium, if you could give us your presentation, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, Brian Terry, insight CEO for the record, I have been sworn in. I will run you through a fairly brief presentation, somebody mentioned something about a game, there is a game this evening, so hopefully we can move through this quickly. This application is, is for POD A21 within the Avenir PCD. Again, this is 204 single-family, single-family lots, a little over 62 acres, again, these lots are 50 by 130 that are being proposed, two legs, and a fairly significant amount of open spaces, it has three different recreation parcels that are sprinkled throughout the develop, through the, through the POD, so I'll show you that as we go. Obviously, everyone's very aware of the location for Avenir off Northlake Boulevard. Looking at the overall master plan, the star indicates where POD 21 is, so this is just west of Coconut, off Avenir Drive, directly adjacent to the Charter School site, which came in front of this council, I guess, a month or two ago. So, here you can see an overlay of how the, the development plan fits on the property and kinda fits in context with the proposed POD and developments around it. This one's a little bit unique, and it's got some interconnectivity to the west with POD 19, which is a future POD, which I'll show you briefly. Kinda blowing that site plan up, as you can see, I'm just gonna kinda walk you through a few primary components to this, the ingress and egress is kinda centered within the overall property there, median opening, so you've got full left turn and right turn lanes from Avenir Drive accessing into the parcel. Centered as you come into the community, so you come through the gates, then you're immediately in front of really what is the primary recreation area, so it kinda flanks both sides of the road that bisects and the entire property. I have it enlarged, and I'll show you in a second. There is a secondary recreation area that's a little over half an acre that's here on the southeast corner of the property. We do have a secondary exit-only access point on the very northern end, that also will serve as secondary fire ingress and egress to the property in case there's ever an accident in the entrance gate. Obviously, we are adjacent to the conservation area on our entire west portion of this property, so there's the 25-foot conservation buffer that's adjacent to us, and then we have the additional fire break or, or open space that will run adjacent to that conservation buffer. We do have the dog park, it's in the very south, kinda, let's call it the southwest corner, this is, this has, again, two dog parks within it, this will be shared and provide access to also the POD 19, it's in the future, a multipurpose path that you can kinda see on the northern edge of that, that will connect through and allow for access for both communities to this, to the dog park itself. And then, obviously, we have the 15-foot landscape buffer that's consistent with Avenir Drive, and on the east side, this is adjacent to the Charter School, this is something we worked in concert with Urban Design Studios as they were working through the charter site to make sure that that landscape buffer was correct and shown consistently between both approvals, so that it was, you know, again, the wall's in the center, the landscape's on either side, and it makes sense. And then on the south side, obviously, we're adjacent to the parcel that's not within the Avenir PCD, so that, that 25-foot PCD buffer runs along our entire south side and across access. So, here's a quick enlargement of that entrance recreation amenity. We're excited about it, we think this creates for a really nice entrance point, as you come through the gates, you'll be, work through that first intersection, and on either side you see what is basically a passive open lawn, you have these nice little entrance plazas kinda flanking both sides of the entrance, a playground and a, and a pavilion, a picnic pavilion that would be on the lake on the left side or west side, and then on the east side you see a mail kiosk with the parking and also a plaza space. The technical site plan, not very interesting. Here is the entry rendering, so you can kinda see what the concept for this entrance is, using the Maypan coconuts, you know, trying to do something that's a little bit just interesting, using the curve of the, of the coconuts, nice beandering sidewalks that work through that, and the signage that's being proposed. What you don't have a part of this application is any architecture, there is not, there have not been any architectural homes brought forward as part of this, this is just simply the site plan. Again, so now if you enter into the site plan, or, you know, that first intersection, this is a perspective view rendering of what that recreation open space would look like. I mentioned the dog park, this is again on the southwest end, so this portion of land that, again, starts to have cross access over to POD 19, we have the opportunity to provide a couple of dog parks that we think will be a great asset to both communities and certainly the overall Avenir PCD. We have multiple site sections, again, roadway cross-sections, these are all very consistent with what you have seen and approved in the past, nothing particularly unique in this community that, that isn't being done on the others. The entrance way, again, as far as the two lanes in, two lanes out, the eight-foot sidewalk, and the landscape meeting with the signage in the center. On our, that would be the eastern side, this is again adjacent to the Charter School, this is the buffer that had been coordinated again with that application, and then on our western side where we have, we're up against the conservation easement, we'll have that 25-foot buffer adjacent to that, along with the 10-foot fire break, and then where there's the necessary need for retaining wall to make up the grade to the finished lot elevations, that will be there, as you can see on the edge of that 10-foot fire break. A variety of sustainability efforts that are designed into this plan, certainly something that was considered, and we worked through primarily with the landscape plan, but also, I think, utilizing and creating a really nice pedestrian system that helped connect through the other part, the other POD in the future. So, we're happy about having this in front of you here this evening, certainly appreciate your support to move this application and approve it, and here to answer any questions that you have. And here to answer any questions that you have. We are in agreement with the conditions of approval that are tied to this application. So again, thank you for your time. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have a staff presentation tonight, Brett?
Madam Mayor, do not.
All right. Thank you so much. And I don't see anyone wishing to speak. We don't have any comment cards. So I'm going to close the hearing. May I please get a motion and a second to approve Resolution 312023?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 312023.
I'll second.
All right. Dana and Marcy, thank you guys so much. Let's bring it back for discussion. Anyone want to start off? Bert, you go for it.
Yeah, I really just have one question, just to solidify my thoughts here, is there'll be no entryway on the east side to the Charter School. So if you're taking your child out of the community, you'll have to go out to Avenir Drive and walk down the sidewalk, ride your bike or car, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, because I'm totally honing in on the Charter School as a one-entry-point way in and out. So I want to make sure down the road, there's no connectivity through that wall to the Charter School on the east side. It's going to be solid, and that's how it's going to be.
Absolutely. No vehicular, no pedestrian.
Beautiful. That's all I had. Thank you.
Good question. All right. Anyone else? Marcy, you had your light on?
Okay. Just some minor comments and then a question. It's hard to believe that this is like one of the last three pods of Avenir, which had a 20-year build-out, and it's, I think, happening in less than 10. So that's, it's amazing. About 10, I know. To you, it probably feels longer. I'm sure. But kudos to all of you guys for doing this so quickly and so nicely. Question during, for the gates, the access, the entrance gate, is, and I thought about this the other day when I was driving home and there was a power surge in our community. We have manned gates, and that dawned on me when the power goes out. Does this feel safe, open? How does that work and during storm events, et cetera?
Yes. If the power were to go out, they would fail to be open to allow for access.
Okay.
And also, in addition, any non-powered gates have Knox box and keypad locks for emergency access.
Perfect. And I love the connectivity through the conservation area to the future parcel. I was curious, as you know, I live in Evergreen, and we have critter crossings where there are preserves and a road goes through that. I was just curious because of the elevation change, especially here with the conservation area. Are there critter crossings because it will totally connect to the other parcel? So it would be a long way around.
There's a condition of approval included with the development order for the applicant to coordinate with staff on the possibility of including critter crossings through that parcel.
Yes. And so does that mean that that's required? Or is this that they're going to have to coordinate that in the future with the other parcel?
Yes. It's a coordination.
Okay. Perfect. And then it seems like there was a fence. Obviously, there's going to be a fence around the dog park.
Correct.
But around the entire area of the crossing, and the only reason that I am bringing that up is because yesterday, when I was out walking my dogs, just walking in general, there was a bobcat literally next to the fence with my two little creatures. So I was, it just brought that thought to mind when I was reviewing this the night before.
There's a fence that continues around.
Entire area, yeah. Okay. Perfect. Then that was it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Seeing no other comments from council, great stuff. I love looking at residences that have access to sustainability areas as well as lakes, and it's just a really great design, good-looking pod. And our council asked some great questions. So let's move on to our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Moving along, next on the agenda is for council actions and discussions and items of interest. And this is where we get to do our city manager evaluation. So I'm going to wait to see who puts their light on first. Anybody want to start? Carl?
I'll do it. I'm not afraid. Okay, maybe I'll wait. Anyway, so to kind of, it's not really a brief thing to evaluate the city manager year to year because our plate is so full with the forward progression of the city. So Ron and I, I think it was either the 12th, Friday the 12th, we met in his office at 8:00 AM for coffee. And when I first got elected here, which is now a little over seven years, I had no clue how to be a council member. And I ran because the police and the fire asked me to, and we knew the term limit stuff. So after I got elected, I walked into his office, and just as a civilian, having no idea what I was doing, I just said, you know, the last council, which included you two, nothing negative, I go, you guys have built this city up so much, now what are we going to do with all the people that are here? You know, everything's so good, or how are we going to keep them there? And there was a conversation on parks. And almost instantly, I'm not taking credit for anything, but there's a reason for saying this, almost instantly, it seemed like the city pivoted a little bit. And we put the pocket park in on Holly, like within a few months of that. That was on the citizens' thing. And he goes, and Ron told me, he goes, Carl, I'll run the city. He goes, you take care of the citizens, and you bring me back the feedback of what the citizens tell you and help guide and shape the city. So that was my first learning curve on how to be a council member. And to this day, look at what we've done in the last six years with focusing on the community, right to the point of fine-tuning and the quality of life of passing an ordinance on the quasi-gambling feature that is just in little pocket back doors that nobody knows about. These aren't things that you walk into and it's got a sign on the door that says, hey, adult gambling, or vending machines, or whatever. They're behind closed doors within a sub-sandwich shop, and you can't, you just don't walk in there. So the city continues to get fine-tuned. We're blessed to have a city manager. The community at large, I get positive feedback about the city manager all the time. And I glow that he's mentored me throughout the years. And when I slip up and fumble, I usually call him first, and, you know, he answers any questions I have. So I'm proud to be a council member, sitting next to the leadership of a person like Ron Ferris. And his staff loves him. He leads by example. They stay here because of him. And when you go to these breakfasts, you can just see that, you know, people love it here, and the community loves it here. And the naysayers that don't sit in this audience anymore, and we don't get the negative emails that we used to get, they still live in the city. So I don't know how we got crazy with pickleball, but we're doing that. I never thought that vision. So, you know, there's no number we give Ron. It's based on what we see year, every year, and it goes on. And that's all I have to say. So Ron, thank you for your leadership and your guidance to myself and your staff and the community. And I hear it nonstop because, well, the one place that I'm really known is the Publix on Hood Road. So other than that, I take pride in not being known at all. And I constantly get positive feedback, not only about Ron, the police, the fire, public works, you know, the response time when we have these hurricane situations, the tornado. And the people know it, that they're taken care of here, and they really do. And it starts with Ron. And so that's all I've got to say. I appreciate you, sir, and I hope I set the pace for you guys. Or you can just say ditto, and we go watch a game. See you later. Thanks, guys.
Sorry, Carl. I've got to keep you going. So, yeah. Ron, sorry. This happens once a year, right? So we get to talk about you once a year. So this is exciting. So I am the new kid on the block. And I have to say, our city manager could not have been more welcoming, transparent. And he's continually informing, educating, and soliciting feedback from not only his staff, but from the council. You know, even before I started orientation and just getting to know everybody was really, was a wonderful experience. And as you know, the council and its manager depend on each other, and the council depends on its manager for a considerable amount of information. And the manager depends on the council to make the best decisions it can after receiving and evaluating that information. And given this dependency, the importance of respect and forthrightness and confidence in the city, the council-manager relationship cannot be overemphasized. You know, the staff's devotion longevity is apparent, as Carl mentioned, and it's a true testament to his leadership, and the city's lucky to have him. As a reminder, I think under Ron, the mill rate was reduced, which equated to a decrease in the tax rate, and our city maintains its AAA bond rating. So thank you, Ron, for just a couple of examples of the many, many things that you've done over the past year. So, thank you.
Ron, I haven't talked about you in six years, buddy. I had to go back in the memory banks. Max had to help me with some information, so thank you, Max, helping me out on that. But, yeah, thanks, Max. But no, I mean, since I've been back at the beginning of the year, Ron has been more than generous with his time with allowing staff to meet with Dana and myself, to go through an orientation for a couple of weeks, to rotate through the departments and meet some of the new people. Most of you are not, but we got a chance to meet some of the other people and the managers and see what was going on and kind of get educated and back into the fold of things again before we took the seats in April. So I thank you for that and reaching out. You've given us a lot of good information from January forward, so we thank you for that as well. For me, I'm just going to talk about three things that I think I will grade you on going forward. And I think these are important, maybe some are minor, some aren't. The first one's transparency, which should be a dead issue by now, but that always kind of resurfaces. If you can't find information on our website, then you, then I don't know where you are because everything is on there, as the mayor states in her monthly letter. We are transparent. We are out there. We are an open book. You're going to know the majority of things that are going on in this city, and that's where you need to look. And I think that's Ron's direction with staff, is updating that, keeping the residents informed of what's going on. And I appreciate you doing that. And I'll always continue to be transparent because I think that's what everybody wants to have in government these days, as the ethics lady had said during her presentation, whatever she was. But it was, I get it. I get it. It's a transparent thing, and I went all through that 10 years ago with what was happening. And let's just be forthright, and I think we solely are. Second of all, you know, I'm going to monitor the budget. I mean, that's kind of my thing. And the way the city's run and operated, the way the budget's now on the website on a day-to-day basis, I mean, that's, who would have thought of that six years ago that we could do that? And we do that now. So again, if you can't see what's going on here, if you can't see the numbers and what's happening with our city, you can certainly come to the council. We're the next line of defense. Then we'll go to staff, and we'll go to the city manager for additional assistance if needed. So again, an open book on the budget, and I think you've done a lot of great things with the money that's coming in, with improvements around the city. As Carl had mentioned, taking care of the residents, which is really what we need to do. So I appreciate your efforts on that, and I look forward to the summer diving into the numbers and having some fun with AP as well. So we're looking forward to that. And the last, Dana already mentioned it too, is just basically council actions and directions as we get with you on some things that we need to address, whether they've been addressed by the city or not. We certainly appreciate your input and working with us to get things done. Some of it is not sexy at all, but if residents are looking for certain things, we need to address it. We need to address it. And I think you pretty much take the bull by the horns and do that for us and make us look good, and we do appreciate that as well. So the three things, transparency, budget, and working with us to get things done for the residents, that's what I'm going to look at the next 12 months, and that's pretty much what I've always looked at. So kind of, you know where an eye stand when we work together. But I appreciate your efforts, and it's good to be back on the council with these four other members. So thank you for having me back.
Very well said. First, I want to share that I find it very effective to provide feedback more than once a year. And I know this is always a tough time as a review, but we meet weekly, and that's why we meet weekly. And I think that's really been beneficial for all of us, and productive, I might add. Prior to Ron's employment, the city was in terrible financial shape. And watching a council meeting prior to his employment was entertaining, but not in a good way, if some of you may recall. But when Ron came aboard, he created a stellar team with our staff, which many of are here today, and I think you guys mentioned that as well. And the heads of staff are, in my opinion, like no other, including you. So you turned that ship right around, and two-plus decades later, look at where we are here. We're a city that's very sought after. Property values continue to grow. We just read in your report 15-plus percent, which is amazing. Who would have thought, right? And we grew this city in such a thoughtful way, and that is under your leadership. The size of our city is not only the only thing that's changed in the 20-plus years, I might add. We've all had to adapt to change. And while some of us don't like change, I think you have been able to conform your mindset and use your and staff's vast and dynamic knowledge to accommodate for the growth that we've all experienced. And I think that's done our city extremely well. I also want to thank you and strongly encourage you to continue to collaborate with each and every one of us council members, which you've done in the past, and be inclusive with the planning of our city's future. And I do personally appreciate when you do that, like we recently did, just, you know, in our last couple of meetings. I just want to say, I appreciate all, I appreciate you and everything that you do, and also for trying to be flexible. We're all very different, so I appreciate you being flexible and help us with all of the goals that we are all trying to meet for our city going forward. So thank you.
Okay. Well, the fun thing about whichever one of us is mayor is usually everyone says everything by the time it's your turn to speak. But Ron, you've been here for 23 years. Patty's got you beat by one year. Not going to rub that in, but, you know, in the time you've been here, the city has doubled in size. But the service has got better, which is pretty extraordinary. And the staff has stuck around, which is also really extraordinary. And as Marcy said, you know, you have to deal with all five of us, which I can't imagine is easy, and we change every couple of years as well. Most days, I don't know how you do your job. It is extraordinary to watch. But the thing that heartens me the most is the dedication that our staff has to you, the 600-plus people who spend their full-time days here inside and out, the 500-odd part-timers that come and go. The great stuff we hear about our city is completely a reflection of your leadership and having a great picker for people. Because I have two and a half years left on council, and I look out at everybody every time I'm up here, and I know I'm going to miss everyone so much in two and a half years. And that is because you've put together the most extraordinary team, and they are completely a reflection of you. You are ready all the time with a text or a phone call. You take things that are very complex and you make them easy. You take easy things and you make them fun. It's extraordinary to watch you build a city because you have woven yourself into the fabric of it, and we're really, really lucky for it. I can't thank you enough. I don't know how you do it. You see every piece on the chessboard, and sometimes I think you see them well before they move and prepare us for it every time with nothing but our residents in mind again and again. So thank you so much for your service. It is absolutely a pleasure to serve with you. And that's it.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
And I'm sorry we do this every year publicly. I know you love it. It's your favorite.
I'm sure he's going to turn his hearing aid up now.
Yeah, I think the hearing aid was off. Next is our city attorney report.